Good evening and welcome to the school committee meeting of September 18th. I'd like to remind everyone this meeting is being broadcast live. It is also being recorded for use at a later date if needed, so please keep that in mind. I would ask you to please join me in a moment of silence. And this week we had a Duval Elementary student pass away suddenly, so I'd ask you to please keep their family in your thoughts. Thank you. Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone, for coming this evening. We've got a pretty full agenda, so we're going to move right along. I impotente a motion to approve the minutes of August 28th.
So moved.
Discussion?
We have a, um, it's, I'd hate to say an amendment, but the next pilgrimage area collaborative meeting is October 10th, 2019, not October 8th, last page.
Okay.
Thank you.
Michelle, would you correct the minutes to reflect that?
Motion to amend to reflect Mr. Boyce's statement. Approved.
Second. All those in favor of the amendment? I impotente a motion to approve the minutes, and it was already seconded. All those approving the minutes as amended? Thank you, everyone. Okay, superintendent?
Good afternoon. It's great to see so many folks in the crowd. Before we get going on the agenda, I'd like to introduce our interim principal of Indian Head Elementary, Mr. Gary Pelletier. Gary comes to us, he's retired from Waymouth. He was a elementary principal and an assistant superintendent in Waymouth. He's done a couple of stints as an elementary assistant, or as an elementary principal, the last one in Situate. He was on the, he worked for the Mass Association of Secondary School Administrators recently, when we were able to plug him up this summer after the departure of Jill Cottrell. And I think so far Gary's made himself pretty well-known in Indian Head. As we walked around yesterday, I got a lot of, "Hey, Mr. P., hey, Mr. P." and high-fives to Mr. Pelletier. So, so far, he's been doing a bang-up job in the interim, and we just wanted to introduce you, Gary, to you folks in the public.
We thank you for allowing me to be at Indian Head. We had a great opening, smooth opening in school. Kids are awesome. Staff has been nothing but cooperative, and it's been really exciting, I can say, from my past experiences at great little schools. So, thank you for allowing me to be there.
Thank you.
Anyone have anything to ask? Thank you, and welcome aboard.
Thank you for the 9/11 ceremony. That was very nice. Thank you.
Okay.
Moving right on, I wasn't able to go to the Whitman Budget Override Development Committee meeting on Monday. I did get a briefing from Mr. Lamontina yesterday. He said it was a very brief agenda. The gentleman that Whitman has consulted to do the needs assessment in the town of Whitman is ill, but feels that he will be able to maintain his job performance or keep the evaluation going. I'm not sure if Ms. Byers was there, and she might want to add. The next meeting is September 30th, I believe, which I hope to attend. But I know they're moving forward with their needs assessment in the town of Whitman. The consultant is ill, and I actually also presented the MARS, or gave them a copy of the MARS-Whitman Assessment that is in your packet today, too, for the override committee.
Don?
I'm sorry, I was unable to attend, so I didn't have an opportunity.
So we'll update you at the next meeting.
Any questions?
Unless Randy wants to. You're free.
Randy Lamontina, chairman of the Budget Override Evaluation Committee. Jeff basically summed it up. It was a very brief meeting due to a very excusable illness by Mr. Madden. He will be able to finish. He's done quite a bit of work. He's worked, he's gotten a lot of information from Frank. He's compiling things. I know he plans on reaching out to Jeff. The MARS report was on our agenda. I did pass over that because Jeff was not able to make the meeting. I feel he should explain it. But an overview of it myself, I think that's going to be helpful information for the consultant. And September 30th will be our next meeting, and hopefully he can present that.
Thank you, Mr. Lamontina. Any questions? Okay. I impotente a motion to open the public hearing on the regional agreement assessment method, and I need a roll call vote, and we'll start with Mr. Howard.
Yes.
Still moved?
Yes.
Second.
Yes.
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 Okay, the public hearing on the regional assessment method is now open. I'll give you a brief explanation of how we got to somewhat where we are, and then the superintendent's going to take over. Back when Ruth Gilbert Whitner was the superintendent here, as she was leaving in the last year or so, we had noticed, her and I, that the regional agreement was antiquated. It had schools that were not in the district any longer. It referenced the Park Ave School, which has been closed. It did not reference Hanson Middle School. So we thought, well, maybe it's time to make the regional agreement into the 2019, or whenever we could get to finishing it. So we decided to impanel a committee. So that's how this regional assessment part of it started. It was not intentionally started to change any agreements or change any formulas. It was updating. And as we move, Jeff can-
So I'll piggyback on this, because over the past two months, this has been encompassing the Central Office admin team about what the regional agreement is from 1991, what the amendments in 2018, and something George and I became aware of is that there are two methods of assessing communities via a regional agreement. I found, and once I spoke to members of DESI, Christine Lynch, who works in DESI Finance, I've consulted our attorneys, and what we found, and I'm going to give you a series of what we found to be true from the past and the present, there was no malice and there was no illegalities as far as the method that the assessment was made from the start through 2020. It was legal and binding, as we found that once a budget is approved by a community, and that is a member district, meaning Whitman and Hanson, once the budget is approved, the method of assessment carries. So up until 2020, the Whitman-Hanson Regional School District has been using the alternative or agreement method. DESI is already in the process of changing the name from agreement to alternative. We were provided information throughout the course of the summer, and let me back up a little bit. Through this, we are investigating, and investigating is a challenging word, we're looking into who knew or who should have known, or who should have advised, members of the regional school district amendment committee or the school committee, past and present, of these methods of assessment. Through conversations with past and present school committee members, they were never afforded the ability to make a decision or have knowledge that there was a statutory method or an agreement method. I don't believe members of the selectmen or finance committee in either towns were made aware through my office that there was a decision to be made or at least two methods of assessment. And they are different, and that's the key point. They are different. So going backwards, and I'm hoping that members of the public, members of the selectmen, members of the FinCom, anybody that was involved in local politics, past and present, the members of the public aren't blaming them, pointing fingers and saying, "You should have, you should have known." I don't believe they were afforded the information. I hold MARS, the Mass Association of Regional Schools, a little accountable, because in their presentation through the minutes that I've read, we're never distinct in describing what the statutory method was or what the agreement method was. And in the school committee packet at the end, you will see the PowerPoint presentation that was presented, that is the statutory method of assessing a regional school district. It is implied in the new regional agreement, the one that was passed in Hanson in November of 18, passed by the school committee in June of 18, and passed over in May of 19 in the town of Whitman, it is implied that the district is going to use the statutory method. When I spoke to Steve Hemmern from MARS, who helped write the regional agreement, he concurred that the district would be using the statutory method. I don't believe members of the committee, members of the selectmen, FinCom, or towns had an understanding that a statutory method would have a financial impact on one town versus the other town. There is nothing in the minutes that clarifies that. That doesn't necessarily mean that we don't, as a community, have to come up with a way to assess for the students of this district that is fair and equitable. There are two methods of assessment. One is the statutory method, and one is the agreement method. There are two distinct differences in the statutory method versus the agreement method. The statutory method takes into account the minimum per pupil expenditure designated by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, and is given to the local districts in January of that year. So when we look at fiscal '21, I will get the numbers from DESI at the minimum local contribution from each community in January. That number will fluctuate based upon six factors, one being inflation, enrollment, wage adjustment factor, income, property value, municipal revenue growth. Those are the six factors that DESI uses as they gain information from DOR every year. That's the statutory method. Then we go into the rest of the budget. In the statutory method, you start with the minimum local contribution. Both towns come up with that. Anything in excess of the local minimum contributions goes to the regional agreement, which would, by rule of our new amended agreement, per pupil for any other operating expenses. That's the statutory method. The statutory method does not have to be approved by both communities unanimously at budget time to use that method. The agreement method is a strict per pupil representation of assessing the communities. That's the method that we have used. What I have learned in the agreement method is that both member communities have to unanimously pass the assessment methodology, meaning the agreement method, either prior to the budget being distributed, which would be a town meeting early in the year, or prior to the May town meetings to agree on the assessment methodology, or at town meeting. For instance, if both Whitman and Hanson approve the budget in 2021 based upon the agreement method, by law, that's binding. What I have further learned is that at town meeting, if one town does not vote the budget forward, and one town does, you do not have unanimous consensus for using the alternative or agreement method. That will then go back to the school committee, who can and could hold a district-wide meeting, otherwise known, from what I've heard in this community, as a super-town meeting. At a super-town meeting, the only method of assessing a community or communities is the statutory method by law. Majority of the district-wide meeting will carry the vote. But the only method that can be used at a district-wide meeting in following the May meetings, if there's a split, is the statutory method. If there is no budget by Jan, or by July 1, I need to inform the Commissioner of Education, and the Commissioner of Education will put the regional school district on a 1/12 budget of the previous year, so it is level-funded of the previous year. So if we don't have a budget by July of 2020, we will be using the fiscal 2020 budget numbers at a 1/12 rate. The key piece of this, which I've learned over the past few days, is that the law dictates at a super-town, district-wide, whatever you want to call meeting, if there's no consensus of a budget based upon the agreement methodology or the assessment methodology, the statutory method of assessment is the law and binding. That's new information that I've learned from our attorney, through information based upon DOE or DESI and so on. The statutory method was really introduced to regional schools, what I see, in 2007. In 2010, and this is all available on the DESI website, there's a document that says, "Preparing Your Regional District Budget." And if you turn, and it's in your packet, school committee folks, if you turn to page three, and I'll read this. "In the case of a two-member regional school district, if the appropriating authority of either member, either members votes not to appropriate the amount, so reapportioned and recertified, the regional school district committee shall convene a district-wide meeting at which the revised budget and assessment shall be placed before all eligible voters. A district-wide meeting shall only consider budgets based on the statutory method. Notice of this meeting must be given at least 14 days prior to the date of such meeting." And I'm sorry, I took it out of order. But that's, I think, critical for the public hearing piece of this. It's also critical to understand, and there's handouts for the gallery, that we have used the agreement method since at least 2007. And I gave school committee members the statutory method numbers for FY '19 and FY '20, and it's available for the gallery in FY '20. Using the statutory method of assessment, for FY '20, Hanson's assessment would have been $10,007,867. Whitman's FY assessment would be 13,3, or was 13,3,50469. In the agreement method that we used, Hanson's assessment was 9,670,975, and Whitman's actual assessment was 14,398151. And you can see the difference of 1,047,682, sorry. So that's the item here of crux. We don't have an amended agreement, according to our attorneys, according to DESI. We have one community affirming that agreement, and I believe I've heard that they're going to try to recuse from that agreement, from that amendment. We have a 91 agreement that we have been following the agreement method for, I believe a gentleman from Hanson told me, 60 years. We had a good meeting, and he told me what his thoughts were for 60 years. So there's a lot of emotion in the communities right now, and I'm asking for reason. I'm asking for our kids. What I am afraid of is not having a budget for our students in July of 2020 and being level-funded. There have been communities recently in the news, Dyson Rahobeth and Dennis Yarmouth in particular, that if you Google them, you're going to see similar situations, and you're going to see people wanting drastic cuts and deregilizing and so on and so forth. I'm hoping that we get a pretty good bang for our buck from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts in the form of Chapter 70 money, although it is reducing. We still get more than most, and I'm hoping that we can have a calm, educationally-based conversation, moving us forward, because we still want to move forward, but we can come up with a solution that isn't a district-wide meeting or a 1/12 budget governed by the Commissioner of Education. That's where I'm at.
Questions from the committee? Rosemary, I'm going to do the committee first, and then we'll get to the gallery. Thank, I'm sorry, but thank you.
So, I think you hit on this, but I want to make sure this is clear. So presently, the operating agreement that is guiding the district is the current regional agreement, not the amended-
Correct. Correct.
And in that agreement, this is what I need, your help or an attorney's help, I'm not an attorney. It seems to contemplate the existing agreement between the towns, the current regional agreement. 91?
Yes.
91. It seems to clearly spell out that we're essentially using, while it's not, doesn't call it that, it seems to suggest that we're using the alternative or the agreement method.
Correct.
Okay.
So far, correct on all points.
Okay. So have we gotten any clarity from anyone in terms of this potential conflict between a DESI regulation and a binding legal agreement between two towns? And what controls or what supersedes what?
Kevin, do you want to jump? Kevin Brezian is our attorney that was, has been consult.
Welcome.
Good evening. Mr. Howard, I think your question was about a conflict.
We have a binding agreement, legal agreement between two parties.
Yep.
Town one, town two, Hanson and Whitman. Clearly spells out the contemplation of the apportionment of costs.
Yep.
Specifically that we would be using this alternative or agreement methodology. There seems to be some, and I'm sure we'll get into this further, guidance, potential regulation that suggests another utilization, another methodology. So I guess what I'm struggling in legally, if you and I sign something, what supersedes? Guidance, regulation, or a binding agreement between the two parties?
The regulations implement the statute. The regulations are, they're not, they're not law. They're regs that are implemented by DESI to implement the statutes. The regional agreement is an agreement between the towns pursuant to both the law and the regs. I guess, I'm not sure, I think just it might be easier to start with. DESI has confirmed for us in conversations over the past week or so, and probably even longer with the superintendent, that the existing regional agreement does reflect an appropriate and allowable alternative assessment method under the law and under the regs. And they've also confirmed that in any given year, approval of the budget that's based on this alternative assessment method constitutes that approval of the method itself, which the law requires to be done on an annual basis. So as the superintendent explained, if in any given year there isn't approval of the budget based on this alternative assessment method, then the regulations provide for the process that results in a district-wide meeting. And pursuant to the regulations, the statutory method is the only method that can be used in that circumstance. So there's a lot of competing provisions here. I don't know that there's a conflict, per se. I think it's, you know, you've got to look at it as sort of a step-by-step process. You start with the alternative assessment method that's laid out in the agreement, but then the regulations provide a mechanism in the event that there can't be, that there isn't a budget approved based on that.
So I guess the potential conflict, and just my interpretation would be that if the agreement clearly specifies utilization of a methodology, in this case, the alternative or agreement methodology, it appears that the regulation specifies unanimous requirement in some of these things. Again, that was never contemplated. I don't see that contemplated in the agreement. I see an agreement that says, "Party one, party two, this is how we're going to do it."
Right. Yeah, I agree with that. The agreement doesn't, and regional agreements typically don't use the terms statutory method, alternative method. They lay out, this is the method that we're going to use in this, in this region. I think the key point here is that by law, in order to use an alternative assessment method, it needs to be approved unanimously by the member towns each year. So in any given year, you know, going back however many years that this has been in place, when the towns have approved the budget, they have approved that, the use of that methodology. I think that the situation that you're alluding to is where one or both towns do not approve the budget that's based on this alternative assessment, then the regulations provide that process where the statutory assessment method is used at a district-wide meeting.
Right. And when you say by law, where are you, because I think you hit on this, your words, there's a difference between law and regulation, correct?
Yeah.
Is there a place in Chapter 70, because I have not found it, that clearly specifies the explicit use of these multiple methodologies?
The, well, I think, I think the provision in the law that I was referencing is the requirement that the alternative assessment be approved unanimously each year. And that's in Chapter 71, Section 16B. It's also spelled out in the regs, but, you know, it gets, that gets its authority from the statute. So when you don't have that unanimous approval in a given year, then the fallback provision kicks in.
Chris, you're good?
Fred.
Fred?
The potential conflict, and perhaps you can clear this up, CMR 41.05 requires the school committee to annually vote along with the budget, or to annually vote, I think it's number two there, or letter B within it. It requires us to vote on the method. So we actually have to vote the method.
So just to be clear, you're referring to 603 CMR 41.05-1B, I believe?
Yes. Correct. Yes.
So, yeah, this was brought to my attention this afternoon, just shortly before the meeting. And I'll tell you, you know, my initial review of this, I don't, I don't know that I would agree that it requires the school committee to vote on the method each year. What it says is the budget that the school committee approves will identify a number of listed factors. The different revenue sources, the amount estimated for those revenue sources, the total amounts to be assessed to the members, and also whether the members' assessments are going to be based on statutory or alternative. But I think, sort of linking back to the discussion that we just had, the starting point is what the agreement provides, which in this case is the alternative assessment method. You know, I would not be confident advising the committee that you could take a vote, given your existing regional agreement, to utilize the statutory method to calculate your initial budget without confirming that with DESI. That question, we didn't, it came up this afternoon. We didn't have a chance to confirm that with DESI. I think it's a, I think it's a stretch of the regulations, and it's also, you know, as we mentioned, this is a regulation and not a statute. So I certainly want to get confirmation from DESI that they would interpret it that way. My reading is, you've got to just identify which method has been used, you know, in this region. That's the alternative assessment as a starting point.
Anyone else?
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Don.
Jeff, do you know regards, I guess this isn't a question towards you, but regarding South Shore Vocational Technical High School and the assessment method they use, they have been using statutory method. So I think I'd just sort of like to mention that both member towns have been approving assessments for South Shore Votech based on the statutory method in the past.
So pause through you, because I haven't looked at that. This is more through you, but do we know what the legal agreement between the towns and South Shore Votech says?
I don't know what every town does, though.
No, I'm not-
What does the legal agreement say? So I understand that maybe there's an opportunity to utilize an alternative method, but again, I'm going back to, if there's an agreement between two parties, if Mike and I agree to something, and we sign the dotted line and say, "This is what we're going to agree to," I'm kind of, my opinion is, we need to follow that. Now, we can talk about changing that, but we need to follow that regardless of, unless someone's going to pass a law saying, "This supersedes your legally binding agreement."
But I believe it does.
Ally, then, Chris?
When I was reading through it the other day, it says you use either or, based upon what the regional agreement states. Our regional agreement states that we're going to use the alternative assessment. Once it goes to the towns and the budget is approved, that's it. It's the alternative assessment. If we want to change the regional agreement and say, "Now going forward in fiscal year 2021, we want to use the statutory method," then once it, you know, we do the budget based upon that, and then we can go to the statutory method. But right now, because we're still operating under the old agreement that says alternative method, that's what we have to go with.
Chris? So, thank you for clarifying what's happened in the past. We vote, as Ally said, once it's voted in town meeting, it's binding. I think what you're talking about, Chris, is a little bit different going forward, right? Because we're trying to work through an amended agreement, right? We're not-
That's not binding, now.
So I think-
Well, that's, I'm getting to that.
Okay. Okay.
What I'm saying is, until, the only thing that's superseded are- What I'm saying is, until, the only thing that's superseded are lack of following through on the requirements by reporting correctly, is the town meeting from each town voted to approve the budget. In other words, there is a, there is a law, you know, that says we, in those regulations associated with that law, that says we have to do it a certain way. We haven't. We haven't followed that, you know, regulation.
So I'm not, I'm not sure. I'll look to our.
Back to the attorney.
Legal friend over there. I'm not sure that's the case.
Do you, can you come back up?
Could someone frame the question?
Yeah, sorry. What I'm saying is, we haven't followed the regulations in terms of how we vote the methodology and how we should report the methodology. We've just been going along with an alternative method without following the regulations. Correct?
No, I think my understanding and of the facts and how things have happened in the past, and this has been confirmed by DESI, is that I think what you've been doing has been compliant with the regulations through the creation of your budget and the approval of the budget. There may be some question, and I don't know all the facts, about how it's been reported out at the end of the year to DESI. There is a requirement in the regulations that the method that's used be reported on the district's end-of-year reports. We posed that question to DESI, I think, for, for the practical purposes of this discussion. The answer is that that does not affect the validity of the budget, even if there had been a mistake made or a neglect to report that.
Correct. And I understand that, and I agree with that.
But the way, the way that the budgets have been created, using that alternative assessment method, and then approved by the towns, that does comply with the statute and with the regulations.
By the approval of the towns, correct? That, that's the key.
Right. Yeah, there, there's a, you know, the law says you need to, both towns, in this case, it's unanimous, in this case, it's the two towns, need to approve that alternative method every year. But it doesn't need to be a separate vote. The approval of the budget or the assessment is in and of itself an approval of the method.
Correct. I understand that, right. So I guess all I'm saying is, there is regulations in place that guide us through this process.
And with, with all due respect, there's a legally binding agreement that both towns have signed on that should probably guide us through the process as well.
I guess my thought on that, Chris, is if you and I enter into an agreement, and there's a statute and regulations in place that says our agreement should have been done a different way, I would think that that would supersede our legality of our agreement.
So I think he said it wasn't statute. There is a question of the regulation.
The reg.
I think, I guess where I'm coming from is, we have an answer about what's happened in the past. Question is, what are we going to do going forward? Right? And I guess my interpretation is, it's pretty clear that the statutory method is, just the other way it's written and referred to, is that's the method you use. If you don't want to use that method, there's an alternative, but then you have to have a unanimous vote by members. So until we do that, it's pretty clear that it should be the statutory method that we use going forward.
So I think that's, that's, to me, that's.
Fred's next, and then Dawn, and then Ron.
That's fine. Thank you.
That's the essence of the question. I think that's what we're going to keep, and that was the kind of question I had with the conflict, what supersedes what? You have an agreement that says one thing, we have something else, regulation that says something else, what trumps what?
Fred?
Two things. First off, if the attorney could answer this question. When you say unanimous approval by the member towns, are we talking unanimous approval at town meeting, or the fact that the town approves it?
It's, it, the phrasing, it's a little, you've got to look at it a few times.
It's ambiguous.
A little clumsy. What, and especially in a two-member district, what it really means is, all of the towns within the district need to approve it.
Okay, so both towns.
If there's a seven, seven-town district, all seven need to approve it. If you get six, that's not going to be enough. So here, you know, you need both towns to approve your budget anyway, so it's almost academic. If both towns approve the budget, then both towns have unanimously approved the method.
So, and I just want you to walk me through to make sure I understand this properly. We come to town meeting, and the taxpayers should be aware of both methods. They deserve the right to know what is what. And in this case, we go up, we're sitting in Whitman, and we say, there are two methods to determine a school budget. Our agreement states that we use an alternative method, and this is what our budget is. Well, our budget doesn't change. No matter what it is, the assessment is what changes our budget, we still get the same amount of money. So, you know, the school district doesn't gain or lose on, you know, whatever is done. It only becomes the difference in how the towns are assessed. So you make the public aware that there is a difference. This is what the agreement says, this is the alternative method. But if you reject this, and it comes back to school committee, and we end up having to call for a super-town meeting, for lack of a better word, or a district-wide meeting, I believe it's termed through DESI, then the only method that can be used in the assessment is going to be the statutory method, which would then, you know, provide you with X amount of dollars difference in your budget for Whitman, you know, would have been a million and change swing from last year's assessment, and an additional million dollars and change to Hanson. Am I correct in that playing out that way?
Well, I think you started by asking what the town meeting should be told. I'm not, I'm not sure I can opine on that. I mean, I think the process you described is correct. As we discussed, if both towns do not pass the budget, then that district-wide meeting is the fallback, and the statutory method will be used. You know, I think from a practical standpoint, you know, the purpose of the regional agreement is to have an agreement that can be enduring as to how the towns are going to divide up costs, and I don't think it's ever, you know, an effective or efficient process to be year by year, trying to decide which methodology is going to be used. You know, I think most districts, they're, they'll follow what's in their agreement, whether that's just by the book, what the statute provides, or some alternative that they've come up with. And over the years, you know, those things might be amended from time to time.
So if this scenario plays out, we end up doing statutory anyways, because it's the only method that can be done, but we also risk going into a 112 budget, a level-funded budget, and the kids end up losing, is what ends up happening. Is it your legal opinion, as our school's attorney, that that's the only way that this committee can put forward a statutory method?
Well, I think, I don't think the committee can put forward a statutory method under the existing regional agreement.
Right.
I think you have, you have a method that's laid out in the agreement, that's been agreed to, it's been approved, it's in effect, DESI has said it's valid. That can certainly be changed through an amendment to the agreement. Or if the budget process plays out and the budget is not approved under that method, then the regulations dictate that, you know, in that case, the statutory method would be presented. It's the only method that can be presented when you get to that stage.
Thank you.
Dawn?
The state makes it very clear, they want you to use a statutory method by making that the default. And from my reading of the Ed Reform Act in 2007, they want to recognize the minimum local contribution to provide equity to all students. They want all students to have the best opportunity to learn, equal to their neighbor, and equal to the neighboring towns and all the towns across Massachusetts. So the state tells you, they want you to consider each town's ability to pay first. They recognize that different towns have different abilities to pay. So in reading this amendment to the regulations, it says, notwithstanding the provisions of any regional school district agreement. That means to take into consideration what your town's minimum local contribution is first, and then any contribution of an assessment is followed by your regional agreement after that. I think no matter what your regional school district is, you're going to have two towns or more, or three or four or five, and no, two towns are apples to apples exactly. There's going to be one that's going to be a little more offset than the other. Two, like, two neighboring towns on the South Shore, Rockland and Hingham, what if you had a Rockland-Hingham regional school district? I don't, you know, we can just think of that in our head, but would that look at, as far as the ability to pay? So there's always going to be a little difference there. So that's how I see.
Mr. O'Brien?
So through you, Mr. Chair, too, our attorney. So in about a little less than three weeks, Hanson has special town meeting. And in that town meeting, if they decide to overturn the acceptance of the agreement that's been proposed, then we stay with the 1991 agreement. Yes? No? Because they.
You stay, you stay with the 1991 agreement until it's amended?
Until it's agreed by both towns?
Well, in order for any regional agreement to be amended, it needs to be approved by both towns, and the commissioner of education needs to approve it.
Okay.
That typically happens after the towns have given their requisite approvals. So until those three things happen, you're, you're existing under the 91 agreement.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from the committee? I have a live audience. Go ahead.
Not really a question, but more of a statement. I see where you're coming from, Dawn, how you would interpret it that way, but it very clearly says either or. And yes, it does then further go on to say, if it's not approved by all member towns unanimously, then you go to this, to the statutory method. But it doesn't say you have to use one over the other. They're just saying, when they don't agree, you have to then use this one.
There are two methods available.
Right.
Right.
Anyone, Fred? Mr. Young, I've got a couple in front of you, and then we'll, I'm trying to do this with some sort of order.
Actually, to our attorney, through you.
Yes.
I don't know what your background is, and this is only a theory of mine, but I recently had someone from MASC who was nice enough to break out the chapter 78. And it seems like this provision, the statutory, came into effect in 2007, and that was about the time that they started considering income into the formula for, you know, the minimum local contribution. If you look into the chapter 78, the amount of money that Whitman brings into the district is 64 point something percent, and Hanson brings in about 5% less, you know, than their 40%, you know, on the 60-40 split, so to speak. So if you're looking at the difference, it coincidentally is right around that million and change of what Whitman shares, chapter 70 money is. So our additional state aid that we're getting, that's attributed toward the formula from Whitman, and the statutory method seems to even that out. Would you concur with that?
I, you know, I don't know. There's, there's a lot in there, and I can't, I don't know that I can speak to the specific numbers. I, I mean, clearly there are considerations on both sides here that should be part of a discussion about whether the existing agreement should stay in place or should be amended. I'm just trying to tell you, as things stand now, what the law requires, you know, what's allowed and what's been done in the past, and how that's been approved by DESI. But, but certainly, there's, I'm sure, plenty of discussion to be had about the approach moving forward, but that's got to be done through the amendment process.
Anyone else from the committee? Chris?
Chris George, for Shelley Lane Whitman. I want to read something from the Finance Committee handbook that both towns follow about regional school assessments. When the Education Reform Act was enacted in 1993, it changed the manner in which regional school assessments were determined. Assessment calculations for member towns should begin with the wealth-based minimum required contributions of each community. The State Supreme Judicial Court has affirmed that the education reform assessment methodology supersedes the assessment formulas prescribed in regional school agreements. So the required net school spending portion of the regional budget should be allocated to members based on their minimum contributions, plus the total amount covered by chapter 70 education aid. Any planned spending above net school spending requirements is then allocated among the member communities based on the regional school agreement. The agreement also dictates how non-net school spending, or how non-net school spending, such as capital and transportation costs, are allocated among the member communities. The regional district may opt to prepare its assessments based solely on the regional agreement, but this requires unanimous agreement of the communities each year. That's directly from the Finance Committee handbook, sent to both towns, and to every member of the Finance Committee, both before and present. To me, it's pretty clear. 1991 agreement is superseded by the change in the law. The reason why? Because they changed the way they did state aid. Following the regional agreement as it stated does nothing except reallocate aid entitled to residents of Whitman to the residents of Hanson. It's that simple. All you have to do is take the, the foundation formula, add it up, divide it 60-40, you can see the change. To Fred's point, it's exactly a million dollars. That's what we're talking about here, right? The state decided, and actually even increased the wealth-based aid even more in 2007, that it wanted towns to contribute a certain percentage to their, their kids' education. And it superseded any agreement we had in place. It really shouldn't be that difficult. Every time I turn around, everything I look at tells you, you need to follow the statutory method. This has been going on for years now. And it's, it's really clear, really.
Chris DeYoung?
Do you have a question, Chris?
No. I'm sorry, Chris.
He's reading verbiage that really has no legal bearing. The legal bearing, the legal bearing for this matter is really in chapter 70, chapter 71, and in the regs from the DESE. Chapter 116B is clear. It says, "The assessment shall be apportioned in the amount determined among the several communities in accordance with the terms of the regional school, school district agreement." That's 16B. If there's been a Supreme Court ruling, this hasn't changed, still there. And just so you understand, it's an either-or, going to the regs 4105, number one, it says, "The budget shall identify each separate revenue source, and the amount estimated for each revenue source shall specify whether the members' assessments are calculated pursuant to the statutory assessment method or the alternative assessment method, and shall specify the total amounts to be assessed to the members for the support of the budget." And then, under initial action by local appropriating authorities, it says by, it says, "A vote by the local appropriating authority to appropriate a member's assessment shall constitute approval of the regional school district budget. The use of alternative assessment methods shall require the approval of all the members, and such approval may be given by a separate vote of the appropriating authority," or, listen to this one, "if a separate vote is not taken, approval of the budget or the assessment based on the alternative method shall be deemed approval of that method," meaning the, the, the alternative method. So, I mean, it's pretty, it's pretty clear. If there's been a Supreme Court ruling contrary to that, it hasn't been updated in the regs, and it hasn't been updated under chapter, chapter 71, section 16B. And if, if 16B basically says that the school committee shall apportion the amount determined among the several communities in accordance with the terms of the regional school district agreement, that completely is contrary to what he just said, because you're bound to, to prepare your regional school district agreement on the basis of the alternative method. It's right here in 16B, and this is not contradicted by anything. Because even if you go to the regs, it says, it's either or. It's not one or the, it's not one over the other. And I find it really strange, what I find strange as a citizen and a taxpayer, that the DESE would make a ruling that, in spite of all these things, we can, one town can hold out, the majority town can hold out for, for a super-town meeting, and just keep, you know, and, and vote basically against the budget, and then the, the town with the most voters can impose its will on the minority community and force and force that minority community to fork over another million forty-nine thousand dollars to the other community. I just find that entirely absurd from, from the standpoint of the state.
That's, that's- Thank you, Mr. Young. Rosemary, you've been very patient. I was trying, I was trying to get to you, but I saw you talking, so I apologize for jumping over you.
I did wanna bring up what the, my name is Rosemary Conley, 405 Franklin Street. I did wanna bring up what the Finance Committee handbook strictly says, and I'm, I'm grateful somebody got to that. But I also want to have everybody keep in mind that last year, nobody knew what the statutory method was. So, I find it odd, and it was reported to the state that we were using it. So, any vote that was made was made under the assumption we were using that statutory method. Any citizen who voted in Whitman and Hanson thought that the law was being followed, and it wasn't. And essentially, a million dollars of welfare money essentially was diverted over to Hanson, and that's the truth of it. It is state aid intended for poverty, intended for poor students. It is wrong to do this. We need to smarten up, and if we're, if we're gonna continue, we could even, in a relationship between these two towns, it has to be an honest, considering relationship. The method, alternative method is allowed for emergencies. When those six criteria don't meet something, a bomb hits Hanson, and we say, "We are, we're stable, and we wanna keep education stable, we'll use this alternative method." It's there for compassion, not for exploitation. And I believe it's been used in a form of exploitation. It has been. We voted, when you called up DESI, when we looked into it, when Fred looked into it, they said, "We are using the statutory method." How else would anybody have known that there were millions of dollars, you know, unequally being paid? The financial experience for, of a Whitman voter, or taxpayer, was more. We paid more financially. The experience on our households were financially more than on a Hanson household. In fact, if you did an override and did the million dollars, your financial experience would just equal out what Whitman has paid for him for seventeen years. It wouldn't be any different. So, it's, I think people need to consider that. It is essentially diverting a million dollars of state aid intended for poorer people. Please consider that. And, and that you didn't know the method, tell, and you tried to say, "Well, it was voted on." No, it wasn't voted on, 'cause you didn't know about it. We thought, and when it was reported, it was reported as statutory, and if any voter went to check on it, they would've thought we were doing it right. Thank you.
Can I just make a comment?
Yeah, Jeff.
Just on that, on that note, I attended both FinCom meetings in both communities, and neither FinCom informed me that there was a statutory method. I'm not trying to take anybody off the hook. I'm trying to clarify what I actually knew as a superintendent, and have read in the FinCom books right there, and I don't wanna put anybody on the spot. I know somebody talked about the difference, and that quirk, that sparked our conversations with our executive business director. And we have been marking since 2015 incorrectly the box on DESI. Prior to that, going back to 2007, we've marked the agreement method. This year, I don't know what box to, to check, because we follow one, we do one, supposed to be doing another, allegedly, and we haven't, we haven't. The box that I'm gonna check right now is the alternative method, the agreement method, correct. It was voted in at, at town meeting. But, I feel challenged because I didn't give you the opportunity to know that there was another method prior to your voting forward. So, that's what I'm, I'm saying. You know, again, passing, the only reason I mentioned the FinCom thing, 'cause Mr. George read that part of the FinCom handbook that I was, I was given, and read that as well. And I think what Ms. Conley said is, is prudent to what I said at the beginning. We have a unity of a, of a regional district. What I would hate to see, I, I encapsulate this as, is that we're in a marriage. We need each other. Financially, as our kids, we talk about, when I brought my freshmen in, it was bringing our communities together. I would, it's a matter of money, and money's always sometimes the challenge in a, in a relationship. We can get through this because we have intelligent people, and we need to listen to each other going forward. My concern, as, as mentioned, is the end game. And the, the methodology as agreement right now, I would propose a, a budget based upon the agreement method, because that is what we have in place. My end game is the fact that, in May, one community might vote that, and the other might not. And we then default to a method in the DESI regs, which is the statutory method. And I'd hate to, we have a time, we have timeframe to try to amend, and the woman from DESI told me, since you don't have a binding regional agreement right now, except for the one in 91, your team could start to make amendments and talk about ways to assess your community. She mentioned Dennis Yarmuth, she mentioned Dayton Rahobeth is one, is coming into the same situation. And I mentioned them. I haven't reached out to either one, because I don't wanna get necessarily in their business. I wanted to get our business done first. But, that's where I feel our office did not provide accurate information for the committees, and the selectmen, and the finance committees, that there was an alternative to Ms. Conley, to be able to go up on Whitman Town floor or Hanson Town floor and says, "There are two methods, this is the one we used, and there is a financial difference in either/or." So, that's where we, we drop the ball in our office, and, and people are, or we are dealing with those situations.
Questions for Chris?
No, comment?
Go ahead.
So, two things. So, I can't say this enough, I hate this entire conversation.
Yeah, really?
Because we just, all, and again, and I know we gotta get through it, and we gotta figure something out to keep, as Jeff said, I, I hope the marriage intact. But we're not spending any time talking about how we can approve the district for the kids. All we're doing is spending all of our time on giving up potentially a million dollars. So, I know we need to do this, I know we need to get there, but man, we, I said it last meeting, I'm gonna keep, I'm gonna say it every meeting. We've gotta figure this out, because this is not, I don't think anyone here agrees. This is not gonna move us forward as a district in terms of helping our kids. Having said that, I think, if I look at this in very simple forms, you hit it on the head. We had a, we have a marriage. The two towns came together. They said, "This is how we're gonna live. We're gonna take everything we get with, from the state, we're gonna put it in a bucket. Then we're gonna take all of our costs, and we're gonna take all the pupils, and we're gonna divide it by this many students, pupils over here, this many pupils over here, and those two towns are gonna pay those expenses equally." I fully, if we wanna try and change the regional agreement, then let's change the regional agreement. But that's gonna require us to look at a lot of different things. I heard some socioeconomic things. There are data points. I'm not bringing it up now, 'cause I think they're gonna be divisive. But there are data points where, if you look at some of what Hanson's paying for versus what Whitman's paying for on some of these various costs, it is not equitable. It just isn't. So, we can't just look at some of these little pieces. We have to look at all of them together and figure it out. So, if, if, if that's the direction we're gonna go, then we need to come up with a new regional agreement committee, and we need to work through it and figure it out. But to sit here and say, "We're just gonna throw that all away," I don't, I don't think that's gonna get us anywhere, so.
Anyone else?
Get through it quickly.
Anyone else, before I go to Mr. Kane?
Chris, I just-
Go ahead, Chris.
You mentioned that we're equitable, and I think that the nature of the statutory method is designed for equity, right? It's, it's what towns can pay to educate our students. And I, and I think that's an important component to this discussion, that it's what can Hanson afford to pay, what can Whitman afford to pay? And to Fred's point, we're getting state aid more than Hanson, because we are deemed to not be able to pay as much, right? And, I, I don't know what you're referring to specifically about the other data points, but, I mean, that's probably gonna be discussed at some point, but I'm just, I wanna make it point to say that the statutory method was devised with equity in mind.
So, again, and I mean this, Chris, I like working with you, that's why I mean this. I think the agreements made between the two towns was, was made with equity in mind. I think the towns came together and said, "This is how we're coming together, this is how we're gonna do it." And so, for the state, or anyone else to say, or suggest, recommend, guide, you have to do it differently. To me, that's, wait a second, that's, that, that, that puts a pause in the whole, the whole reason we came together was we were gonna do it this way. If we're gonna say, "Well, the state's gonna tell us or suggest that we need to do it a different way," it calls into, it calls into-
I agree with you that we enter into an agreement, we had that written in place, but there are all other kinds of laws and regulations that we abide by as a regional school district, that we can't pick and choose.
You know? Thank you. Fred?
If we look at each town, Hanson's gonna say, "Oh, heck, this is unfair to us, we don't wanna pay." Can't blame them. The shoe is on the other foot to Whitman, we'd probably be saying the same thing. We don't wanna pay. Okay, but it's not a question of want, and to bring up the equity point, I think it is equitable, the way the statutory method works. That being said, what I think we need to do is, we need to convene a committee to work with selectmen in both towns, finance committees in both towns, and our school committee, and we need to fix this problem, and fix it fast. Our administration right now is spending way too much time worrying about all of this, and as you said, taking our eye off the ball, which is educating kids. Okay? That's what we need to be doing, is educating kids. And Lord knows, we haven't lived up to the expectations of the public, or even on here, our own expectations. So, Mr. Hayes, I would implore if we could convene some sort of a committee, and let's sit down, sit around a table, and work it out. And let's try and figure this out. Otherwise, you're gonna have people standing up at Whitman Town meeting, saying, "Don't vote this budget, send it back to the school committee, make them convene," and we'll have no other choice but to convene a super-town meeting or a district-wide meeting, pack it, and enforce our will onto Hanson's, Mr. Young says is unfair, or by tyranny. But that's what will happen, 'cause people will think with their pocketbooks, and they'll think with their pockets, and what's in their wallet. So, it's up to us to all get together, and let's work together and figure out a fair way of being able to move forward. And let our administration get back to doing what they need to do, and educate kids, and come up with a nice budget for next year.
Mr. Kane, you've been very patient, thank you.
Sean Kane, 31 Forest Street. I agree. I think if Whitman really dug its heels in, it could really come up with some strong arguments. And I think Hanson could do the same. I think we need to find a compromise. I think there could be a third way that we could, it would still be an, an alternative agreement, but maybe some step in, some multi-year step in the direction of one way or the other, or something that a compromise would have to be had, because, like I said, I think both, both communities are in a point where they couldn't, they can't just absorb that in your budget, not in a short period of time, without some sort of aggressive action. And even, even the discussion of a compromise, I think, would be difficult to convince people in Whitman, because we're in such a bad situation, you know? But I think that's where the discussion needs to be. What would a compromise look like, so that you can come up with some decent arguments to have people entertain that, that option? If people dig their heels in, it's just gonna get ugly, you know? So, the past is the past, as you said, and I think moving forward, I wouldn't be black and white, I'd try to find some gray.
Thank you for your patience.
Thank you. Dave Codaro, Ross Drive, Whitman. I'd like to just commend Mr. Smalls for his comment recent, just now, but I would like to disagree with one thing. Majority rules and considered tyranny, there's another word for it, it's called democracy. So, it's a democratic procedure. So, for anyone to categorize it otherwise from the gallery, they're wrong. Secondly, the thought that the committee shouldn't be having this conversation is absurd at its best. I would say, last year, when the committee deliberately discussed for almost an hour whether or not they wanted to write a letter to the school, whatever agency, whether or not to try to have Conley not go that extra day of school. To me, that was a no-brainer. This is not a no-brainer. This is the, these are the types of discussions that you should have at ad nauseam length. Ad nauseam. Expedited, but ad nauseam. But that wasn't the, that's not the original reason I came up here. The original reason was that, early on, I, I think I heard some conflicting information in regards to the agreement, and I just wanna get a point, point of clarification from the committee. Is it the committee's opinion, position, that the current 1991 agreement clearly states out that the alternative method must be used? That, that's a question.
I'm not sure we can answer that as ten different members. If Mr. Howard would look, go ahead.
I think I already asked that question.
I'd refer to the attorney.
Yeah. Are you the first question I asked?
Yeah, I, I think, yes, I would say, the existing regional agreement utilizes an alternative assessment. You know, that phrase, you know, the, the alternative assessment method? There isn't one alternative method. The law allows a regional school district to use an alternative to the statutory method, and that can be whatever the, the region agrees on. So, you have agreed on, at some point in the distant past, a alternative assessment, meaning an alternative to the statutory. And that's, and DESI has confirmed.
Mr. Jones?
While you're still, if, I guess through you, but if one town goes, we all go into our budget, and one town says, "Hey, we disagree, we're not gonna pay this amount, we wanna go to a super." Don't we technically, we own our Whitman-Hanson Regional School Agreement? So, if one town says, "Hey, we don't owe that million dollars, because we think we should do the statutory method," how can they legally hold that up? Like, how would that end up being? 'Cause, as, both towns own this agreement.
Well, yeah, I mean, the, the answer is, you know, you have to have a budget, and you have adopted an alternative assessment, but that requires unanimous approval each year. So, if one town doesn't approve it in any given year, then you don't have the unanimous approval to use that alternative assessment method, and so the regulation process kicks in to go to the district-wide meeting using that statutory method.
But legally, our, our agreement states that we are, we, we own the alternative method. How does that work?
Yeah, and, and that's why your initial budget is always developed using that method. You know, and it seems like for many years, there's never been an issue there. But if there is, that, you know, the law doesn't wanna end up in a situation where you don't have a budget, so there's, there's a process that's gonna be followed, that's gonna ultimately result in a budget being approved, whether that's approved by the Commissioner based on last year's budget, that's the, the last chance. But, but your, your agreement needs to comply with the law. And so, in order to comply with the law, you know, it has to have that, the ability to, to follow that process if you don't get that approval.
I guess what I'm asking is, what legality does Hanson have to say to Whitman, "No, you, you have to pay that amount of money, like, in this budget season, this is how you agree." Do we have, how, how does that work?
Your, your budget needs to be approved by both member towns, and so, in the scenario you're describing, it's not approved by at least one member town. And so, then, the, the next process kicks in, which is that district-wide agreement. And then, you know, it's still, the budget needs to be approved at that district-wide agreement by, you know, by the, all the, all the, the attending voters pursuant to the regs. And if it's not, then you go to the next step, which is the Commissioner implementing a budget. But ultimately, there's gotta be those steps to, to end up with an approved budget at some point.
Thank you.
Sorry, I hate to harp on this point, but it's still not very clear to me is, is the, is the language in the agreement. Is it the school committee's position that there's, because they present language other than a statutory method, that that is the only way an assessment can be done? Or, or does the 2007 statutes change that, meaning that a statutory method can be, can be utilized, and/or a alternative method can be voted on and used? So, I'm just trying to get clarification from the school committee.
Again, I'm not sure that the attorney can even answer, can even answer that for you, but I, I think it, uh-
I'm pretty sure I understand what he's saying. The agreement, as it stands now from 91, I think it was, says, "We're gonna use the alternative assessment." Then in 2007- Then in 2007, Desi said, "You can use either/or," but we did not change the agreement. So, part of the agreement, we are still on the alternative assessment. And it does not change, regardless of what anybody wants, until we change the agreement to go either assessment or statutory, unless we amend it.
I guess we're talking about the verbiage in the agreement, right? And is it, does it refer to alternative or not? Or does it just say, "This is how we're gonna do it, 64," right? So...
Per pupil.
Right.
Correct. And that is deemed by Desi as an alternative method.
Right, exactly.
After the agreement was made.
Correct.
Right. So, that, so, that, I think that's the question. It was never referred to as an alternative. It was just the method that we used. And so, now we're at a point where there's been changes in the law, in the regulations, and it has been deemed, anything other than the statute statutory method would be an alternative method. So, it's not like we, that our agreement refers to an alternative method.
No.
It's just, that's the method we use.
And if I can piggyback, any method outside of the statutory, Desi deems as an alternative. We could come up with our own things, at different data points, whatever, and that would be deemed an alternative method versus statutory. So, the 91 agreement is strictly per pupil, as I read it, as Desi has now classified as a per pupil.
Yep, per pupil.
As an alternative.
Can I ask?
Page seven at the top, sorry.
Three, two, our attorney. There is verbiage, and I'm sorry I don't have it with me, that describes an alternative method on a Desi website. Describes a specific method, and I think it's with that CMR 41.05, that it describes Town A and Town B and Town C, if I recall correctly, and it shows an alternative method. So, I just want to clarify what you're saying to me, and that is, there is more than, any method that's not statutory is considered an alternative?
Yeah, I mean, that's partly...
Or is there a particular
No, there is...
formula for an alternative method?
It's not like there's two methods, the statutory and the alternative. The law allows districts to utilize an alternative to the statutory. I don't know that any method is gonna be approved, because ultimately, it needs to be approved by the commissioner. But, you know, there can be a multitude of different alternative assessments. And I think if you look at different regional agreements, you'll see that they utilize those. That, I think you're referring to the handout from Desi, the guidance for regional school districts on budgets.
What's that?
They utilize some examples, I think, just for illustrative purposes, to show in a three-member district what the breakdown might look like using statutory versus some alternative that, you know, they've kind of built in some percentages as an example.
So, I have a question now. The alternative method has no formulation whatsoever. The two towns, or four towns could make up, "You're paying 10 percent, you're paying 10 percent, you're paying 10 percent, you're paying 70." If they all agreed, that's called their alternative method? Does it give them the liberty to just come up with their own formula?
Yeah, you know, the idea is that you're gonna, you're gonna come up with something that works for your district. There's gonna be some parameters on it. I don't want to say, you know, any formula would suffice. But any formula that does suffice and is approved by Desi would constitute an alternative assessment method.
Okay. Thank you. Chris? Don't go anywhere.
So, as legal counsel, could you just clarify for all of us the difference between statute, regulation, and guidance?
I think you've sort of stated them in the order of their authority. The, you know, statute is a law that's passed by the legislature. It's interpreted by the courts. Administrative agencies get authority to implement regulations, to implement laws. And so, you know, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education sets regulations that implement the laws that govern school districts, regional school districts. And then, you know, that agency that establishes those regs, they are given deference in interpreting those regs. And so, they'll issue guidance from time to time, you know, to help out school districts in, you know, how Desi interprets the regs. You know, ultimately, the regulations are not, they don't have the weight of legislature, of legislation. But, you know, they're given deference, and Desi's interpretation is given deference.
Thank you. Chris?
Given that Desi's the regulatory authority for, well, for the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, right, they are in charge of regu, you know, implementing regulations. I have a, I take issue with the fact that, since 2007, almost no one knew about this being rolled out. And I really think, more than any other reason, that's why we're in the predicament we're in. So, if we are gonna convene a committee, I think we really should involve Desi and have them do their job, so to speak, and...
They didn't do it last time.
I know.
Which is unfortunate. But they, let's be honest, to put some blame, and I know people don't want to play the blame game, and I brought up last school committee meeting, for 12 years, it's been, I won't say wrong, but it wasn't done the way that supposedly in 2007 was supposed to come out. The state screwed that. They're the ones that screwed the pooch on it. Because you go back and look at these PowerPoints and everything else, they never clearly stated how it was supposed to go. But I'll let you finish.
No, I agree, and that's the point I'm making. But I, even going up to this point, I wish there was someone from Desi sitting right there, you know? And I'm disappointed there isn't someone there. So, I really want to lean on them as a regulatory authority to help guide us through this.
I think they'll just tell us to go with either/or as it suits the regulation.
Right. I think there's some clarification needed in terms of how we proceed. That's my point. In terms of the, you know, the statutory versus an alternative. Without us having to, you know, get to the point where we end up with a super-town meeting.
Robbie?
So, I think the vast majority would agree that, at some point, and sooner than later, and I agree with everybody's product, there has to be a committee formed. If for no other reason, this amended agreement's out the window. In my, just Rob's brain's opinion, this is out the window right now, and hanging there, that we need to look at the budget component of it. So, you need to get Selectmen from both towns involved, FinCom from both towns involved, school committee involved, obviously, Desi, I guess. I'm just not, I'm not happy with the state, and I'll go back to what Fred said to me a couple of meetings ago. State lies to us all the time. So, but, the whole, so my question with that is, because I think everybody agrees that something needs to happen to figure this out. But what is the timeframe? Because as the attorney brought up, okay, so, you get the towns and everybody sit down and start discussing it. Say it takes until January or February to figure it out, which I think it'll take at least that long. It might take longer. But then, the state then has to sign off, or the commissioner does. What is the timeframe there? Because now you're already into budget cycle? So, we've got a real, and maybe I'm wrong, and I'm gonna go to the attorney with this, but you've got a real problem with the budget cycle, because the way I see it right now is we're staying doing what we've done for the last, since 1991. That we can't, and again, I'll go to the attorney with it, that until the two towns convene and set up a committee to discuss even just that one single item, never mind everything else that's in the agreements, I could see that taking a year. I could see it taking nine months, and I don't know how quickly this, because it's gonna take the towns a while to, on both sides, absorb it and come to, just like contract negotiations with unions. It can never fly out of it quick, and most of us have been involved with that. And sometimes that can take a year or longer. And then, how long's it take for the state to sign off? Because they're the ultimate...
Yeah. So, the question is, how long would it take for the commissioner's approval?
Yeah.
Not long, in my experience, because we typically, you know, when I've been involved in working with school committees amending regional agreements, we do consult with Desi throughout the process. We do run drafts by them. You don't want to present something to towns for approval that Desi's gonna have an issue with, because you do need their approval at the end. So, you know, usually, you've, they've seen the language, they've kind of given you an unofficial blessing on it beforehand, and once the towns complete that process, the commissioner's approval can come pretty quickly.
So, within 30 days-ish?
It'd be hard to give you a number. That doesn't sound unreasonable to me, you know, especially if they're aware that, you know, there's time pressures. They're usually pretty good with working with districts. You know, the reality is that the process, the local process, you know, does take some time.
So, I, so, again, I go back to like Fred, Chris, Chris and a whole bunch of people and even the gallery brought up. It's, just the way I'm looking at it, as far as the agreement goes, right now, it's a singular issue that needs to be addressed probably before everything else needs to be addressed. I think you do need to reconvene a whole new regional agreement committee, but to focus on that part, because in fairness to both towns, in fairness to the school districts, we're gonna, we have to hit the budget cycle in two months, three months?
Yep.
You know, by February, usually, we're presenting the budget. I gotta be honest, I don't see that happening. And I don't know how all that works out legally and things like that with the whole thing, and then try to get it for town meeting in May, I think...
It's gonna be a struggle.
We're gonna have to expedite getting members of the Selectmen, FinCom, school committee, Desi, whoever else, into the same rooms to start having discussions on how to best handle this. Because otherwise, and again, I'm far from an attorney, but, and a whole bunch of people disagree with me, but the way that I look at it, it's based on the respective pupil, pupil enrollments. And then, at that point, towns can sue and go to court and do whatever they gotta do at that point, I guess, which I don't want to go that way.
We're gonna, if there's new questions, a new testimony. Other than that, I'm gonna wrap this up shortly. I've got three people that have been very, very patient, standing there. Fred?
Real quick, I just want to address, when we come to our budget cycle, and I know there's discussion and there's an override committee in Whitman, and what I feel needs to happen is, and this is my personal feeling, but it's my hope and aspiration, that our administration will be putting forward, in a very short period of time, an estimated budget for next year that would show what our increases in a projection out over perhaps five years, the best quote-unquote guesstimate that they can, and also what the educational priorities of the administration are, and what the cost associated with those priorities. You know, let's not forget about the fact that we lost many positions last year. We've taken a big step backwards. Regardless of this situation, we still need to move forward, and we've got to regain what we lost last year, and then step forward from there. I'll shut up from that. I'll get off this over. But, you know, I think that all this is, we're taking our eyes off the prize. And, yes, there's a major step back, yeah.
Chris? And then I'm gonna move to the gallery, because I know there's some important information.
So, big if, because I can't speak for the towns, but to Rob, just to build on Robbie's point. So, if we decided to go with a new regional agreement, I would think we'd actually need a town meeting to approve the regional agreement before we actually got to the meeting.
You know something? You're absolutely right.
So, there's another step in there that we just have to think, yes.
And I missed that point. You're absolutely right. Yep.
Thank you for your patience. I realize this is a very important discussion.
Amanda Rubens, Reed Street in Hanson. So, I'm just, I'm just a mom of three kids for the next 16 years that are gonna be in these schools. So, I'm trying to figure it all out, and regulations, and statute. What happens if Hanson goes to October and they? I was at the town meeting where we voted in the new agreement. What happens if Hanson kind of says, "No, we're retracting that"? Do we just revert back to the 1991, and that stays in place until everybody comes and votes again?
Yes. We're basically at that juncture right now, because Whitman hasn't voted it. So, just the fact that Hanson voted it in the affirmative without this information, and there's probably a very good chance that they're going to rescind it, it brings you back to where you started, to the 91 agreement.
And does that affect the kids in any way at all?
Next year.
Like in...
If we put forth, just to be clear, if we put forth the, a budget based on the 91 agreement, both communities have to approve that budget at town meeting. The probability of that happening is, I think, I'll speak, I think that is zero.
And what happens if they don't approve that?
If they don't approve that budget, it goes back to school committee and to a district-wide meeting based on the statutory method. If there is no budget out of that, the commissioner of education deems our budget flatlined and gives me 1/12th, I pay people by monthly, every month. If we don't have a budget by December, the commissioner of education takes over the fiscal responsibilities for both, for the entire region. And it's level funded at the budget of 2020. So, our budget of 2021, if I guesstimate, we're gonna be up $2.3 million in salaries and expenses. We will have, we will be 2.3, and this is totally rough. We'll be cutting $2.3 million in the district next year, if we have no budget in July, based on the commissioner. That's just rough. Those are numbers that we did today. Just rough estimates, because it's September 18th, 17th, and we're already talking about our budget and potential cuts if we don't fix this. That's why I concur, if we can get the ball rolling, and Chris, Mr. Howard is absolutely right, we need town meetings as well. So, this is expedited to fix this before we get to D-Day and a super-town meeting and not having a budget, or putting it in the commissioner of education's hands. And to answer your question, what happens to the kids? Not good. We go backwards 10 years, and we've already taken a step back. I want to keep my eyes on the prize and move forward. That's what we all want to do. We have not, Mr. Small, we haven't looked at the town, the budget projections. We haven't done anything but this for almost a month and a half. But I'm better at this. It's always done. It's always done.
But we do have opportunity to kind of make a whole new agreement, something that everybody knows about and can look at and vote on.
You have opportunity, I think. If this committee decides to move forward with a new regional agreement committee, compromise of Selectmen, FinCom, Mars, school administration, and school committee, correct?
I would, just jumping in from a standpoint, the attorney's here. What you're asking us to do, and what Fred's asked us to do this evening, I believe we can't say that we're going to convene a new committee until Hanson makes a decision. We are taking a lot of things into effect that is gonna happen. So, with the first town meet, I mean, the October town meeting in Hanson, I believe, is the 7th, the first Monday in...
Just ahead of three weeks.
Would that be the first Monday?
Why not form it anyways, and if they don't, we say that's moot at that point.
Right. Well, we can form it, but I'm saying we can't meet until that particular thing is done. That answers your question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Betty, thank you for your patience.
My name is Elizabeth Al Sullivan, and I go by Betty. And I attended every one of the original meetings about regionalization. I was not on the committee, but I attended every meeting. It was decided, the most important thing was the per-pupil cost, that each town would be responsible for its per-pupil cost. So, that's about all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Laura?
Just to reiterate what Betty just said. You know, I think we all know that the basic foundation of this agreement has always been per pupil. And I know people tonight may not have heard the answers from the attorney that they wanted to hear, but until a different agreement is struck, it's still per pupil. We're going by the 1991 agreement. And I know, Mr. Simon Ek, you had indicated you weren't certain if we had an article on our town warrant regarding, and I assure you, we do. And the reason that we've put the revised regional agreement on our warrant is because we want to neutralize and give Hanson an opportunity to be thoughtful. We really did not fully comprehend, and I mean, to the person. Selectmen, voters, nearly everybody involved did not appreciate the change that was being made to the agreement. And so, it really fell upon the Board of Selectmen to do what we thought was right, which was to, we can't completely undo it, but we can rescind the original vote and then bring us back to where we are effectively now, but lock it in, that we're at the 1991 agreement until such time as a different agreement is struck. You know, we stand ready... as a different agreement is struck. You know, we stand ready to do what is in the best interest of the citizens of Hanson. We look to the school committee to make a decision about what your next move is going to be. And to the extent that you need participation from the selectmen, then we're more than willing to do that. But I do want to caution that whatever steps you guys take and whatever rhetoric is out there, that people are spreading on social media and, you know, saying, saying things that I, I'm hoping they don't really mean, but they're saying in the passion of the moment, we should be united in that this is a regional district. These are all of our kids that we're talking about, that we're trying to educate. And as long as we get diverted into this dialogue and we're throwing, you know, hand grenades over the wall at one another, what we're not doing is focusing on the discussion about how to improve education to our children. And that's a great concern to me, and I know the rest of the board of the selectmen in Hanson share my thoughts, but I urge you guys to listen to the counsel that you've gotten, whether it's what you wanted to hear or not. It's the same, same advice we've gotten and the same counsel we've gotten from our town council relative to the agreement, which is that that's the agreement that prevails, and that statutory is really a default method unless you have something else in place. And, and that 2007 guidance very clearly says, notwithstanding a regional agreement. Well, guess what? We've got a regional agreement, so that needs to be counted. So it all comes down to the 1991 agreement. That's where, that's where it's at now. That's where it's likely going to be after October town meeting. Again, we stand ready to partner with you guys in whatever way you see fit, but the next move is yours, and we look forward to hearing from you.
Thank you. Fred, and then Sean, and we're gonna close, we're gonna...
Just on the, you know, people speaking about who's decided to split per pupil and do the split that way. And that was over 25 years ago. And the way that state aid has been calculated and chapter 70 monies have been calculated, the town of Whitman is responsible for more state aid. And it just coincides in my brain that with all this coming out in 2007, coincidentally, the last time we saw an increase in chapter 70 funding was right before they came out with the statutory method, and we have seen nothing since. The fact that Whitman, the minimum local contribution, Whitman's over $3 million more than the required contribution year after year. We're paying far more than what we're required. Hanson pays about what they're required. So, you know, when you talk about the equitable, is it in that chapter 70 formula? And does that make it so it splits per pupil where it wasn't doing that originally? Unfortunately, things do change over time. I wanna make sure I reiterated that.
Mr. Cade?
Just that, other regions are going through this. And it has been reported as, as recently as last May, some of the compromises they came up with. This is out of one newspaper from Amherst in town. It said, this is from the finance director. He explained that the way they revised method is to calculate 30% based on the statutory method and 70% based on a five-year rolling average of the, of the population. The portion based on the statutory method will be increased in the next two years according to an agreement between officials from the four towns and will be averaged over a five-year period. So there are, there are compromises that have come up with to kinda meet the needs of, obviously it's been thrust on regions and you can't, you can't absorb a million-dollar liability in one fiscal year, so there are compromises out there. I, I feel confident that if a committee's put together, hopefully you'll be able to come up with a good compromise that people can support and not be so, but heads above.
Thank you. Okay, before I close this, take a vote to close this public hearing, is it the committee's wishes to impanel a regional agreement committee in the case of Hanson rescinding, and we have to start this over again for the sake of time?
You'd like a motion?
I'm asking if that's the committee's wishes.
I'll make a motion to, to impanel a committee for revising the regional agreement, if so needed.
Second.
We have a second? Any further discussion? Chris?
So the regional agreement is an agreement between the two towns. And I understand that the regional school committee members represent those two towns, but I'm, I'm, I kinda, I, I'd almost like the towns to weigh in a little bit on their thoughts, because this does become a, the regional agreement is there to help guide us as well. And the regional agreement was executed between Hanson and Whitman. So I guess I'd be interested in the towns' thoughts on us undertaking that as well. As a school committee member, I'm in favor of looking at the regional agreement. I think it requires updates numerous, but I, I guess I'm just hesitant on our unilateral authority to do that without the towns weighing.
Okay. Chris? I might have misunderstood you. I thought you were talking about convening a committee that included town administration as well.
We haven't heard, so, but we haven't, so the only folks that are talking about this is us. So I, I don't know where the Hanson selectmen stand on that, or where the Whitman selectmen stand on that. They, they, they speak for the towns to some extent.
Okay. Anyone else? Betty?
I wish that you would include some citizens.
Most certainly. We did the last time, and we will this time.
I also have something else to say, just for the people who don't know me, 'cause I know you do. I was on the school committee for seven years too.
Betty, you were the chair for that sometime, weren't you?
Uh, not for the collaborative. I was the chair for that.
Thank you, and thank, thank you for your service. Okay. My thought process would be, and again, I'm just strolling the south for the sake of, two selectmen from each town, two finance committee members from each town, three school committee members. Anyone else, Chris? Three, two citizens. You know, motion to invite people to be on the committee, Chris? Is that what?
I guess my question is, we have selectmen here. What is, what are their positions on this regional agreement committee?
We just heard.
Through you. So what is the appetite from the town of Hanson and Whitman in terms of their select folks as to the support for creating this regional agreement amendment committee?
I can't speak to that long enough as a board.
We may have to wait until after the both boards meet.
What, Robbie?
Last time, didn't we just, we formed the committee and we invited?
Yes.
We agreed on how it was gonna be structured, and we sent a letter to the chairman of the board of, board of selectmen.
That's exactly what we did.
Because we, we still have to redo the agreement. Right. Doesn't matter. This is, this is a big sticking point, but there's language and everything else. It has, I mean, you could take the Hanson Middle School. Technically, if it's not in there, do we cover that? You know, it's, it's, that's why you have to upgrade it. You have a lot of stuff in there that needs to be fixed. This was a curveball that wasn't defined, and, and all the statutory and all that stuff, this messes it up even. So no matter what, we still have to have a regional agreement subcommittee again to take what we had put out there and revamp that one, last one, to, to correct this major issue and get it, get it done. I mean, we can't keep going down the road. I mean, it's gotta be really quick, really fast. People have to commit time to this and get it done, because we shouldn't be going backwards on our budgets anymore. If we get hung up on this stuff, it only hurts the kids.
No question.
That's, that's the whole thing. We just, if you wanna get this done, get the correct people in there that are willing to put their time in, and it's not like once a month, you know, this is gonna be an aggressive plan.
You're gonna have to, you're gonna have to meet more than that. So with the committee, we can structure it, three members from each town. I'm just throwing this out there 'cause no-
Is that creating a quorum?
No.
We're posting anyway, so.
What?
Yeah. We'll be posting.
We're gonna post.
We'll be posting anyway, so.
Two select, one FinCom. Two FinCom, and citizens, two citizens.
From each town?
Yeah. From each?
Yeah.
I'm talking about each.
Yeah.
Anything I'm overlooking? Don't...
Town administrators.
Both town administrators?
Mars, does Mars have to be on?
Yeah, I agree.
We could invite them.
Both town administrators?
Yeah, Mars is...
The overseer.
Well, they are culpable as far as...
Guidance.
We've already paid them.
Yes.
For this.
Yes.
Calling the men from Mars?
Yes.
Yes, the men from Mars.
They were paid for this already.
Correct.
They're gonna probably be paid again.
Okay. Here's what I have.
A lot for the school committee, just so that we're, and I'm, and I'm, I'm just throwing it out there, just so it's the same as the FinComs and the selectmen's stuff. I, we'd be better off going with two from each town versus three, but I'm just throwing that out there.
Two school committee members, you mean? That's fine. Everybody okay with that? Sean, everybody? Two school committee members from each town? Is everybody okay with that? Okay.
Just two? I don't know.
I think everyone's gonna wanna serve on it.
You're gonna have a flock.
I know. What, I'm sorry, what?
I, I don't wanna serve on it, I'll tell you, 'cause I will not be able to commit the time. So, I don't think anybody else is gonna have that.
Keep in mind, these are open meetings, so anyone can come and oyster opinion. And we're gonna have to post anyway. So you want two or three?
I would do three.
Okay. Two select people, selectmen from each town?
Yeah.
Two FinComs from each town? FinCom be all right with that? Two citizens, I would say we wouldn't have too much trouble getting two citizens from each town. Both town administrators, Frank's here. And I think Mary's here, too.
I am.
Okay. And Mars, whatever they send, at least two. Sometimes they send three or four, three actually. Okay. We will form that, Michelle?
They'll be consultants.
Both administrators.
Yeah, we'll be there.
Both, both administrators.
We don't vote, though.
Okay, is everybody good with that?
Do we need anybody from DSC to clarify?
We are, we're gonna get...
We're gonna, I will try to get somebody from DSC as a consultant. There'll be a non-voting member, and I can't guarantee they'll be at every meeting.
Right.
Should we put out into, uh...
And we express immediately for interested citizens to write the office of the superintendent?
Yes.
Sure.
Okay, do you have it, Michelle?
Grace, you hear that?
Three school committee members, two selectmen, two FinCom, two citizens from each town, both town administrators, Mars, someone from DSC?
Yep.
Okay.
You wanna get this stuff fast, right?
All right. I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Sean?
Yes.
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 Yes. The public hearing is closed. Back to the school committee, I mean, the superintendent.
So next on the docket is the Mars, Mars consulting group. In your packets, and I believe I emailed every member the, the results, I'd like to move to the next meeting to discuss. It's been a long meeting right now, and I don't wanna confuse that with this. So we'll speak at the next school committee meeting based on the Mars, on what we found out.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions for the superintendent?
Thank you, Bob. You were pretty quiet back there. I didn't see your hand up.
Oh, okay.
I missed you.
That was just, that's awesome. I was gonna get.
Okay, unfinished business. Whitman water and sewer invoice.
Okay, so, so still hanging out there, and you wanna just wait for the gallery to clear? A little? You want me to go? So anyway, we've been in contact with another attorney, Cliff Rhodes, who basically said, you know, we have an outstanding bill. We have to follow a process before we can challenge that bill. And the first part of the process is an abatement. So we have filed an abatement with the water department based upon the assessment. And the explanation is, we believe that the assessment of additional water sewer charges based on the reread of the meter at Whitman-Hanson High School is based on an incorrect reading of the meter as well as extends for a period beyond a reasonable statute of limitations. For this and equitable considerations, we believe the assessment should be reduced or eliminated. We're waiting to hear on that abatement. After that, I'll brief you as to where we're at. So we filed the abatement two weeks ago, I believe, two weeks ago. Still waiting to hear from them. So that's where we're still, still have an outstanding bill, but we have filed an abatement with accordance of the process of trying to fix that bill.
Any questions about the water and sewer bill? Pretty cut and dry. School stat times, this is old business. We have discussed the implications of stat times. Update, Jeff?
So, yes, basically just keeping that, the eyes on the prize as, as the committee. This is the amount of education that we wanna talk about. We believe that there is some merit to adjusting our start times, but there is a fiscal cost to that with a potential upfront cost of $400,000 adding seven buses. When I say adjusting start times, that means putting the high school to between quarter of eight and 8:00 AM instead of 7:05, and adjusting the three elementaries to be standard, a set start time for each. Right now, our three elementaries are staggered, one being an early, earlier school in Whitman and one being a later school. We'd like to get, to get them on the same schedule. An upfront cost of $400,000, depending on the amount of reimbursement from the state, we would receive 80% potentially. It would be an, an outstanding cost the following year of $54,000. But there is an upfront cost because the state reimburses the calendar year after that, or the fiscal year after that. So in FY21, I need to put together at least $400,000 that would be reimbursed in FY22, but there would be an initial upfront cost. So that's where we're at with this.
Fred, and then Chris?
I would love to hear, you know, more about this, but also as our administration, I think it needs to fall on the list of priorities. And you folks are the experts to give to us, you know, what your priorities are and what is most important. Does that trump bringing back a foreign language?
Yeah.
You know?
So, so...
So, and I, and I don't expect any answer right now. I'm not trying to put you on the spot.
Nope, 'cause we have not started our budget process yet.
You know, but I think that the educational priorities, you know, should come from you folks in knowing that, you know, that's something that's hanging out there, as I believe, you know, geez, way back in 17 or 18, as we were discussing through an email.
I was just gonna ask, Jeff, if you could state or maybe reiterate some of the reasons why we would consider an earlier start.
Sure, a later start. A later, equitable, equitable, and really for the, and, and very briefly, again, that's, I just wanted to briefly touch on this. Research-based information is that the later school-aged children, meaning secondary school, sixth, seventh, eighth, ninth, tenth, and eleventh, twelfth, do better in school, and it's more equitable, or not, it's wrong choice of words. It's more acceptable for them to be at school in a later, at a later time. Many schools in our league and in our region have moved to a later start time. We, as 7:05, are the earliest that I found in the state. Marshfield's close at 7:15. A lot, again, going back to our league, many of our schools start at a later time. It's research-based. The other issue for me around regulating start times is our elementaries, that they can collaborate better if they're on the same timeframe, meaning if we have a meeting, a district-wide meeting for third-grade teachers after school, there's not three different meetings taking place. So that helps our teachers collaborate better. But for me, the start time at 7:05 is the area that we are not research-based and not we're challenged that way, being, being an early, being the earliest school.
Also, on the flip side, when you let students out of high school at 1:35, most parents are working. If a child's not engaged in an after-school activity, if a child's not going to a second job, that is a lot of downtime sometimes at times of students' lives where, at times of students' lives, we'll leave it at that. I've been a former middle school guy, you know? So, so that is also on the flip side. But they really, the need for professional development for our teachers to have it at the same time. When you have a half-day, you have three hours available. However, right now, under our current configuration for elementary school staff, we can only get them available for an hour and 20 minutes at a time altogether. So that leads to extra costs if you have a PD, 'cause you gotta get different, you have to do it more than once, and that leads to just lack of quality time where they can be together as professionals at their grade level.
Also, before I go to you, Don, there are implications in the contract with the teachers that we currently have, if you change the start.
It would have to be impact bargain. The least effective would probably be the real schools right now.
I think in regards to the assessment, and we talk about moving the district forward, this is why I wanted to talk about this subject, as well as restoring programs like foreign language, to let our towns and our board of selectmen know where we wanna be as a school and how we want to help our students. And we talk a lot about the risks and dangers of vaping and of the opioid crisis and social and emotional learning. And getting sleep is another important part of that, and we don't talk about it enough. And we're talking about 14- and 15-year-olds as freshmen and sophomores being outside at 6:20 in the morning. The sun is now rising after that. It won't be till like April. It won't be till, like, April that students will be getting the bus when the sun is rising. It's, we don't talk about sleep as a healthy part of learning enough. So, I think there's costs to it, yes, there's an upfront cost. I don't know if that's considered, yes, it's an operating budget cost, but can it be classified as a one-time? Maybe there's stabilization funds with the towns, maybe capital funds, that they can fund it, 'cause we know we're getting regional transportation at 80%. It's $54,000 to help. Right, we talk about our pillars, pillar three, healthy minds, healthy bodies. I think it's important. I think it's important.
I agree, but it's.
Ellie?
I agree with you, but it's $400,000 upfront, and that, my thought is, where is that money coming from? Where are we gonna pull that from? It's not under my mattress, I don't think it's under anybody's mattress. That's, that's my only concern right now. I completely agree, it would be, it would be better to do that, but where is that initial $400,000 coming from?
Right, we have to ask our towns.
They're already saying they don't have it for anything. I don't think we're gonna get it. That's my concern.
All right.
Dan, just even more money, it's $400,000 for that, it's gonna be about $600,000 for the kindergartens. There'll be another, um, almost two to three to restore, everything we need to restore. So, we're already looking at one point, something over what we already have, which we can never get out of these towns. So, to add this on, yes, you'd want this all for the kids, but like Fred was saying, they have to come back to us and say, what's your priority? Because we're not gonna be able to get all these priorities in.
Right.
You know, that's why Whitman's doing an override review thing, because there's no money for these things. They don't wanna pay the monies. So, we have to be very selective, and that's what they come up with, how to get this. $400,000 might not be a lot, but it is a lot when you have a list of things we have to accomplish that's been out there for years.
Right.
And the, and we're not always guaranteed that you have the, the bus reimbursement either at the, you know.
It's getting better.
It's a sore subject for me with them anyways.
Anyone else? Chris, I'm sorry.
I, I understand the point, Dan, I mean, that's the predicament we're in, and we've been in, um, but, you know, it's our charge as, as a committee to do what we can to move our district forward and build, um, new programs. So, I think to, to not discuss it, to not bring it up, I, I, I think.
We can discuss, but the thing here has always been, we got a lot of new, we got a lot of things. I mean, we, we've been going backwards. We still have to go forward and recover that first, before we add on even more. All these things have been happening in the last eight years that we've lost. And unfortunately, now we've started losing, the head counts last year was significant, you know. But before that, it was nutrition, you know, it's like, all right, but we still lost subjects in the school system that, as, when we were all children, doesn't matter if you're Whitman-Hanson, whatever, you had a lot of different classes back then that don't exist now, and it's a shame. We, we wanna get those back out, and, and times have changed. Kids are still leaving this place not knowing how to live correctly out there. Those classes have been eliminated years ago. So, there's a lot of things there. It's always good for discussion, but the wish list is already out there, and now we're gonna add more to it, so, you know, it comes up to, like Fred was saying. Our administration has to come back to us with, here's, here's the top 10 things we want, and what can we afford to push to the towns? You know, it's always good to have discussions to bring back things and new things and make things better, but we have to really, you know, stay on focus that it's adding up, and we haven't even started the budget process yet.
Fred?
A couple quick points. You know, I think it's up to our administration to tell us the direction, uh, and one of our charges is the budget, and to try and secure the funds, but you need to tell us what the directions need to be. I'm not an expert, I think we went around this table, you probably get 10 different things that might be a priority to each individual person. I know I utilize my time to have a quick discussion and relay, hey, what do you think about this? Do you think this would be good? And then leave it in the hands of administration to, you know, carry the ball forward, if they see the merit of it, so to speak. The reimbursement's at 82% this year. Governor's Bakers and I'm, I'll give the half legislation update. His $1.9 billion supplemental budget does contain some additional monies for regional transportation. As a, at a quick look, I think we'll be lucky to see 30 grand. But it's 30 grand.
30 grand, 30 grand, yep.
Yep.
You know, we'll take it, we won't tell them no. As far as that goes. But we also run the risk, next year, if they decide to go down to 75% for regional transportation reimbursement, or, God forbid, where they were a few years back, the state has a tough time, people aren't gambling, pot doesn't work, who knows what? But now, all of a sudden, you're in the 65% to 67% reimbursement, and now you're really feeling that effect. You know, so I just think that we need to be cognizant on all levels.
Dawn?
I just want to comment that the start time was previously 7:40. So, in addition to talking about restoring programs, this is restoring something. This isn't just to move it later because it's a luxury. It's part of the package to restore programs that were cut before. So, this was a cut. This was the result of a budget cut.
Okay. Anything else on?
I was just gonna throw it there, my son loves the 5:30 wake-up call. The 5:45 and the 6:00 AM. I know you guys are in the same boat, too, so, you all know what I'm talking about.
My son still gets up at 4 o'clock every day for work, and he's been up.
Yeah, no, exactly.
He loves it.
Yep, yep.
Okay. Mr. Kafka, are we, are we on the school start time subject?
Yeah, just, just a quick comment on that, sure. So, I think as it was already said, yeah, Kevin Kafka, Whitman-Hanson Education Association, also a history teacher. Obviously, when you start talking about anything related to hours, wages, and conditions, would be mandatory subject of bargaining. I know it'd been mentioned, but I just wanna make sure that's, that's out there. I know what the, certainly the research suggests, and there's definitely a lot of, you know, arguments for that, but also based on the language that we have, and then in particular, you know, both with students, parents, and staff, looking at kind of setting up for perhaps a year or two years, what that after-school program is gonna be, you know, like, whether it's pickup, drop-off, daycare, whatever the case is. Obviously, that's something that has to be factored in, but I just wanna make sure that the.
That's kinda why I threw it out there, you would discuss this with me at one point, remember? We talked about that.
Yeah, yeah, I just wanna make sure that's.
Yeah, yeah, I understand. Thank you, Kevin. Any questions for him, for a leave? Any more school start time discussion? Okay. I have some field trips that we need to approve. AP Language on December 5th. They're going to Trinity Repertory Theater in Providence, Rhode Island for a play. There's about 125 students, there's three or four chaperones. They're going to need a little bit of substitute coverage. They're needing transportation, they're taking three buses, and they are looking for a waiver for a school nurse. They said they don't know, but they've done this previously, and we've approved them. There were, there are emergency personnel down there to handle any problems. I entertain a motion to accept.
So moved.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Okay, next one up is the Whitman-Hanson volleyball team. They're going to New York City. There's 13 students, there's two chaperones. They will not need substitute teachers, they will not need transportation, and they do not need a school nurse. They're looking for a waiver, because at this particular location, there is emergency personnel. I entertain a motion?
So moved.
Discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. Next up, Whitman-Hanson Global Awareness Program, EF Tours, is going to Australia. 72 students, four, eight, 12 chaperones or more. They're going to be taking a school nurse on the trip. I entertain a motion?
So moved.
To accept?
Second.
Discussion?
Yes. Mr.? Just wanna make sure we don't have our kids getting lost to any great white sharks out of that group.
I'm pretty sure they're flying in there.
Dan Salvucci, uh, from the town of Whitman, and vice-chair of the board of selectmen. How are you paying for this trip to Australia with all these people? Where is the money coming?
Students are paying.
No cost to the district.
Huh?
No cost.
No cost to the district.
The kids pay for it themselves.
The kids pay themselves.
You got 72 kids, a trip to Australia is what, five grand a per?
Four, four, nine, five.
Forty-four, yeah, 4,500.
So, are the parents giving $4,500 for their kids to go?
Yep, yep.
Or, or is it being sup, is the cost being supplemented by other, other avenues, like, uh, charges for, uh, field trips and stuff, or events and stuff like that?
Nothing comes from the district, period.
Nothing.
They raise, they raise their own money.
Every year they do it.
Nope.
I know every year they do it, but I'm just curious of.
Nope.
I can't see a parent giving five grand for the kid to go to Australia.
Dan, when you and I went to high school, there were no Australian trips.
No.
No, we went to New Hampshire.
Exactly. This is 2019.
I just wanna make sure that monies that could've been going into the district, the region, right, is not being converted and going, you know, kids to school.
No, they're all paying.
Okay.
Thank you for, for inquiring. Any further discussion?
I would just like to say, I feel like I got the jip. Can I have a redo? We went to Six Flags in New Jersey, for crying out loud. I wanna go to Australia.
They might be looking for chaperones.
No problem, I'll, I'll pay it gladly.
Okay, I have a motion, the second, any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor? Okay. They actually have a donation, I believe.
That was the thank-you letter to, um?
Yes, it is.
Yep.
We sent a letter to Austin Insurance, thanking them for their generous donation of $866.36 to pay off any vouchers that were outstanding balances for students in the lunch program. It was very generous of them, and we accepted it at last meeting, and would like to thank them again. That's Austin Insurance in Whitman, it was very generous of them to do that. Subcommittee reports, insurance subcommittee, nothing. Warrant subcommittee?
Uh, we have to vote to approve the minutes.
Yeah.
I'd move to.
I have, uh, minutes for September 12th, 2019, as written in your packet, I entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second. Discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Policy subcommittee, they haven't met. Facilities and capital improvements, they haven't met since the last, have they, Fred, right?
Nope, nope.
Legislative update, Fred told us about a $1.9 billion budget that, uh.
Supplemental for FY '19 that we'll see very little to nothing out of.
$30,000, you said.
Even though there's a surplus in.
Any questions for Fred? Last but not least, Pilgrim Era Collaborative, would you tell us again the date change?
Thursday, it's not a change. Well, it is, we're usually the first Thursday in the month, which would've been the 3rd, we're on October 10th. Now, we did get September updates from the executive director. We have taken off the table purchasing the element, the old elementary school in South Plymouth, and I, don't recall its name right offhand. They want $850,000, and that is above the appraised value of the school, so they will not drop from that.
Try to give a deal in school in Whitman.
Well, s, we'll pick other avenues.
Any questions for Mr. Boyce?
Bob, just one thing before you adjourn?
I'm not gonna, I've got some more to do, go ahead.
Okay, I just wanted to send a thank you to Hanson PD and Hanson Fire Department for inviting us over to their, their tactical drill, uh, at McQuon School on Tuesday, and we will be there again tomorrow. There, it was a great experience and learning experience, and it was great to have the invite for us to see what they do.
I had the opportunity, because I was there, and the chief was there, and he, he pulled me in and put on a vest, and I had the opportunity.
She went downrange. Your sister went downrange.
I didn't get shot, I managed to stay out of the fray this trip, but it was a very, very, very good drill, and it shows you how good the PD and the fire department are set up, should we have, and we don't want to have, but they were using McQuon School, because it's a great training facility for that type of an event, and it was fabulous. The director who was doing it kept me beside him, so I said, does that pretty much assure me I'm not gonna get shot? And he said, no, I'm a target.
Yeah.
So, that was good.
Thank you.
So, thank you to the PD and the fire department, and all those involved. I know there were some other people that were involved, too.